Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 7th, 2019 Board Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I only get to say this. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Regal, could you call her all, please?
Dr. Alan Stuck?
Present.
Ms. Colleen Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Yeah.
Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinta?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here. Ms. Larson was not feeling well this evening. I would just like to take a couple of minutes. Like to thank the township for coming out on Election Day this year. It's frontline democracy and it was great to see so many people out at the polls. It was nice that our incumbents got reelected, but also want to welcome three new board members that'll be sworn in the first Monday in December. I don't know if everybody's here, but Laura Crispin, who's a professor of economics specializing in education at St. Joe's, so that sounds like a thing we could use. Antoinette Snodgrass is an attorney. And we've been without an attorney since we lost my friend Dennis Gray a couple of years ago, so that's a skill set that we certainly can use. And last but not least, we have Dave Schwartz, who's a civil engineer. Interestingly enough, you know, with Doc Martin choosing not to run after how many years, Joe? Sixteen?
Fifteen, yes.
You know, we needed an engineer to take his place and even though Dave is, as far as I know, is neither a Patriots fan or a Red Sox fan, Joe has endorsed him.
All God's children gotta suffer.
So we welcome those folks and we're not going to wait for them to be sworn in. We're going to bring them in.
Next week?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday to start orienting them to the district. Also like to thank everybody who threw their hat in the ring, you know, and ran for these positions and for the other positions that were on the ballot, so.
Can I just add on to that? I appreciate also everyone who ran and made this a great election. And I wanted to just make note that these three soon-to-be sworn-in candidate-elects attended a ton of meetings. They have been here soaking it all up and put in the work and we are very lucky to have them.
Yep, absolutely. The other thing I'd like to mention at the beginning of the meeting, instead of when we start to lose folks, is that the district is embarking on a strategic planning process. It's been, I don't know, eight or 10 years since we did that. We're looking at helping to chart the district's course for the next three to five years. We want to hear from all stakeholders in terms of helping us to identify goals and strategies to help us fulfill our mission, to define the ways that the resources can best be directed, and to determine how to best maximize our capacity for student and adult learning. There's going to be three public forums and you're certainly invited to attend. The first is on Wednesday, November 13th, at the middle school from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. The second one is on Thursday, November 21st, in the morning from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the high school. And the third is on Thursday, November 21st, from 7:30 PM to 9:00 PM, also at the high school. If you want more information, it's on the website.
There's lots, yep, lots of information on the website.
And we invite you and we would value your participation in that process. So we're in for a treat tonight. We're going to rearrange the agenda just a little bit and we're going to jump to a preview of the high school play, James and the Giant Peach.
Hi, I'm Susan Malkin. At one meet from today, Haverford Drama Club will be presenting James and the Giant Peach, a translation of Roald Dahl's classic novel. And tonight we have Senior Noel Udebey, who is our James, and she's going to be singing. So, President, what are you going to be singing?
I will be singing "Mile of a Moment."
All right, so enjoy and come out and see it next week. Get tickets at haverforddrama.ludus.com. And we'll make sure that all gets sent out, at the elementary schools and the middle schools as well. Thank you, enjoy.
If this is what my family has to be, then I don't need one watching over me. A family doesn't make you sleep outside. A family doesn't laugh and say you're fine. Remember what a home is. Think of how you're lying should be. What you'll stop in the middle of a moment, can crawl out of there and walk. A few steps away, the world's open, but you can't see that far. Stop in the middle of a moment, that's halfway to somewhere new. Can't go back, you're moving through. You have to think amazing, you have to do what you've got. Like, yes, it's hard to think. See the door than no one's ever seen. Something's there, you're feeling, stalking you. It's all around. So you'll stop in the middle of a moment, but you have a shiny star. Just four steps away, the world's open, so try to see that far. Yeah, in the middle of a moment, that's halfway to somewhere new. Can't go back, keep moving through. Cause it is magic. Now you know, you made magic. Made it grow. And marvelous, wonderful things can come true. In the middle of a moment, in the middle of a moment, in the middle of a moment, you're on your way.
Great, come on, next week, the 14th through the 16th, you get tickets at haverforddrama.ludus.com. More of this.
Great, thank you very much. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the October 24th, 2019 Board Meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nobody has signed up in advance to speak at public comment this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? You'll have three minutes. If you could come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Casmery and my family and I live at 120 Upland Road. I'm here to ask the board to conduct a parent survey for children who receive special education services, so the board can understand the issues surrounding special education in Haverford School District. My husband and I are parents of twin boys, John and Richie, both of whom have a learning difference called dyslexia. We have not had a positive experience with Haverford School District thus far, and I have spoken with other families with similar stories. By conducting a survey, problems can be identified, and more importantly, parents, teachers, administrators, and the board can work together to come up with better solutions for our children. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak?
First of all, congratulations on your victory and thank you for your service, Dr. Martin and the others. Congratulations to, and I too thank everybody for running, because what I believe in most, of course, is democracy and education.
But you've got to tell us your name and address.
My name is Richard McGlory and I still live at 1246 Dill Road in Haverford Town. And I just want to say, I taught dyslexic children for 20 years of my lifetime in high school. It was the most productive part of my life and I certainly, you know, can feel for her and think it's a great idea. And while I'm here, I just want to tell you all about the wonderful autistic support program that my grandson goes to at Manoa School. And I want to thank you for it and the principal, the director of services, and the support people. It is, I couldn't dream up a better autistic support program. And you need to hear this story. Now, little Johnny doesn't talk too good lately, yet, but he's way further than he was last year, thanks to the foundation that was laid last year and a great transition program and things that have happened in his lifetime. But this is what's most important with autistic children, because it is a social disability. Little Johnny has these little girls in school. He fell down and hurt his knee. And two cute little typically-developing girls held each hand and took him to the nurse. Then, a couple of weeks later, they went to the library. And the typically-developing children, who were right there next to the autistic children, held his hand and walked him to the library to get a new book. And a couple of weeks later, according to Ms. Maza, that she took him to music class. And he paid attention for the first time in his lifetime for a whole classroom, too. But what is most important when he went there, five little girls swarmed him, like he was some big thing. And one of the girls turned around and said to Ms. Maza, Johnny's famous. And you don't know what that means to the parent and grandparent of an autistic child. That is precious. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who wishes to speak this evening?
Oh, my God.
Our next item is a middle school student report from Jan Swan.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Jan Swan. I'm in eighth grade at Haverford Middle School, where I play alto saxophone in the jazz ensemble.
You might have been picking up all your great stuff.
Outside of school, I continue my music studies, both piano and saxophone, play soccer with the Haverford Soccer Club, and enjoy taking art classes. Before the middle school, I attended Cooperstown Elementary School. The middle school's fall sports season ended this week. Both coaches and athletes had a memorable season, displaying great sportsmanship in the face of tough competition. The winter sports season and tryouts will begin starting in mid-November. The annual book fair will be held in our library during the week of November 11th. The book fair will be having evening hours from 6:00 to 7:00 PM on Wednesday, November 13th. The student council will be holding their annual food drive until Thursday, November 21st. This is the 14th year that we have been collecting non-perishable food items for our community. We would be thankful for any contributions. The middle school's select choral ensemble, Seventh Heaven, will be performing at the Philadelphia Flyers game on December 5th. They will be singing in the lobby by section 111 before the game. Please see the main page of the Haverford Middle School website if you would like to purchase a ticket and support Seventh Heaven. Our choral department is sponsoring our annual Children's Hospital of Philadelphia toy drive. The toy drive started last week and will run until December 6th. Last year, we collected over 2,200 toys. We truly appreciate the generosity of participating families. Please remember, all toys donated must be new and unused toys. If you need ideas, there is a child wish list posted on our website. Donations may be dropped off in room 242, the chorus room, or at any of the grade-level offices in order to be delivered, sanitized, and distributed to the children at the hospital. Finally, American Education Week is observed during the week of November 18th. We will be inviting our families to the middle school on Friday, November 22nd, to visit classrooms between 8:00 and 2:00 PM. Visitation information will be emailed to families and posted on our website. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a middle school update at the school board meeting. Thank you for your support and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our high school student report, Erica Borby.
Good evening, staff, community, members of the board. My name is Erica Borby. I'm a junior and I'm excited to be presenting on my first meeting. Life at Haverford is electrifying, as always. With fall sports coming to an end, the Ford's football team claimed their first-ever playoff win in school history, dominating Springfield, 49 to 14. Cries of Ford's Ron Delco were held in the stands and on social media as well. Freshmen Katia Juroslavova and senior Mike Donnelly represented the Haverford Cross Country Team at State's, coming in the top 200 and top 100 respectively. Winter sports are prepping in full force, with information meetings being held after school. Tickets for James and the Giant Peach, presented by Haverford Drama Club, went on sale on Monday, November 4th, in preparation for shows on November 14th, 15th, and 16th. Students will attend a play preview on Wednesday, November 13th. Girl Up, our female leadership club, recently finished a service project at a women's shelter. About 30 members of FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, attended a three-day convention at Kalahari. In addition to this, 35 accounting students attended an accounting careers conference at Temple University on October 25th. Best Buddies will be having an assembly tomorrow, Friday, November 8th, to celebrate and recognize Haverford as a 2019 national banner unified champion school by Special Olympics. Teachers will be competing against students in a bocce match. Haverford Science Academy had an extremely successful discovery day on Saturday, November 2nd. Over 800 kids participated in a day filled with STEM activities. The Ford's marching band competed at Conestoga on Saturday, November 2nd, and will be attending a competition at Hershey Park Stadium on Saturday, November 9th. Our two-time state champion high Q team started their season today with their first practice session of the school year. Homecoming tickets will go on sale Monday, November 11th, and Spirit Week themes will be unveiled soon. The Writing Center is open in the library every Wednesday from 2:30 to 3:30 and are providing assistance to seniors for college applications and essay deadlines. On Monday, November 18th, the high school is hosting a free FAFSA completion night from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in room 250. The Math Center is open every Tuesday and Thursday from 2:30 to 3:30 in room 337. Over 10 colleges are visiting the high school counseling department this month, including representatives from Berkeley College of Music, Washington College, and the US Air Force. As you can see, the chilly weather is not putting a damper on Haverford's spirit. I can't wait to update you guys at the next, in the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. The next item on our agenda is a new teacher welcome, Dr. Ruchi and Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. As has been mentioned before, our district and township enjoy a fine reputation among the educational community at large. That reputation often yields for us a deep applicant pool that is, becomes available when vacancies occur. This year was an extremely busy one for us, and a hiring process began back in February. Our principals and their administrative colleagues spent countless hours assessing resumes, conducting multiple rounds of interviews, and following up with reference checks. Tonight, we are welcoming those educators who journeyed successfully through that interview process. As a district staff, we look forward to many years of collaboration and professional growth with each one of them. Their energy for students, combined with their passion for learning, makes them a wonderful addition to an already incredible staff across the district. As Mr. Parker calls your name, we please approach the podium and then allow each of the board members to welcome you.
Okay. Are there any additions?
Yes, two additions.
Okay, great, thanks. Good evening. We will begin with the high school contingent. And as Dr. Ruchi asked, come forward when I call your name and then, of course, after you greet the board, you'll linger, because we know that Anna will be taking your photograph. Or two.
All right.
Peter Bruno from high school. Shannon Moore, high school math. Catherine Kulick, high school math. Peter, welcome. Daniel DeBana, high school physics.
Good to see you.
Good to come here.
Good luck.
Congratulations, economics. Camille Breton, high school world language, French. Michelle Cleary, high school math.
Welcome.
How are you? Josephine Johnson, I'm sorry, high school science. Excuse me, Josephine. Kelsey Hendler, high school music. Stacy O'Brien from Cooperstown. And Rachel Gutman also from Cooperstown, present. Christine Cooper from Linwood. Kathleen Elko, Linwood. Alisa Pizik, Linwood also. And rounding out Linwood, Jordan Kowski.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Angelina O.
Welcome.
EL teacher.
Congratulations.
And Ricky White from our middle school.
Thank you.
And Jenna Krabell.
Welcome.
From our high school. Is there anyone else that we've missed tonight?
Welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome to the district.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Might have to do a double round.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Picture time, Mr. Parker.
Picture time.
Ken Matthews.
Okay.
I'm familiar.
Next item is Linwood construction project update. If you've had a chance to drive up and down Lawrence Road, you may have noticed that things have changed a bit in the last couple of weeks.
Last three weeks, quite a bit. Thank you. So since the last time, really the biggest thing, of course, as you mentioned, Larry's, steel's continued. We're almost done with foundations. We have about two more days of foundation work. And then the steel will just continue over the next month. So things are moving very well, on schedule to remain as VCT, but to upgrade it to quartz tile, and that's for $14,558.15. Again, a hardy material, so at this point, the building would have no waxing whatsoever. Your other schools, it takes a lot of time to do over the summer, a lot of man-hours. So Linwood will no longer have that to deal with over the summer, so. And that is it, as far as change orders. Are there any questions about them or the progress?
Are the third graders keeping an eye on everything?
Yes, they have all their, and up along the windows, you know, they have pictures of all the equipment. We did a little presentation for them and I know Ryan, the architect's coming in, Julian, what, next week?
November 26th.
November 26th, to do a little presentation on how they designed the building, so it'll be really nice for them to see that.
That's great.
And Ken, do we have Torazo other places in the district?
No, you have, oh, excuse me, yes, at the high school, all the kind of main entrance in front of the auditorium, all of that's Torazo. The other elementary schools are polished concrete, acid-stained concrete, similar, similar hardy material, not quite as robust as Torazo, but, so you do have it in at least one other location in the school district.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next time. And a good segue here, since we're doing all this construction at Linwood, we've lost the field. Next item, JR, if you could give us an update on where we're headed at Cooperstown.
Ah, good evening. How are you doing today?
Before you get started, JR, I'll kind of tee it up for you, all right? We're all aware throughout the community of the need for field space. And space for a baseball field is imminent for us, for our middle school and high school teams, due to the construction projects at Linwood. So Mr. Giammi, along with Mrs. Patterson, have examined options and tonight, JR is here to recommend that we actually refurbish a field that previously existed on our Cooperstown property. So he will show us a visual representation of that field and the plans that he has come up with for that refurbishment. So thanks for giving it all the thought that you've been giving it, JR.
Oh, no problem. I was going to sing the presentation, but I don't think I can compare.
I triple-dog dare you.
You don't want me singing. What we started off with is talking to Joanne Patterson and knowing the needs for the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade baseball, we've come up with a plan. We've had, why is this moving on me, Anna? I don't know, maybe it's me. We came up a plan that we had an older field here at Cooperstown. This is like a satellite shot of it, and that's the field that was there. There was an old backstop there. We just removed the backstop, the old one. It was actually deteriorating and rusting and all that. I don't know why this thing's moving on me. I'm not doing it. So this is a shot from, coming from the courtyard there where the new mods are on the left. Anna, this thing is just doing it. I'm not doing it.
No, so it wants to change the view. It's okay.
I'm not touching it. Let me bring my expert in, sorry.
No, it's okay. Just keep talking.
So, the one picture shows the view that, coming from Cooperstown, looking out, what we're going to do is install...
Which one do you want to go back to?
Let's go back to that one.
That's one.
That's one.
This one?
That one. Okay, that's the view, looking from...
You just click here with the mouse.
Click there.
Yes, someone wants to change the view.
Okay, no problem. That's looking from the school where the courtyard is, where we put the fencing in. All right, and then, this is what the field dimensions will be, so it'll be perfect for Jave, seventh, eighth, ninth grade football, baseball. I am not doing this. It's just going on its own. I'll bring it back. All right, so that's that. So then the next slide is all our dimensions on the field, showing distances out to the bases, the radiuses, left field, right field, 265 out to center field. I think that will be, if you're in seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade shooting out that, boy, you're going to the big leagues. So it'll be a nice field for them to play. This is a picture of the backstop, type backstop we're going to put in. This is at Polo Field. The same contractor put this one in will be doing the same work for us. So it will all be fenced in both sides, so just showing the fencing, so there will be no balls, you know, going to either side, first and third. We'll also do a gravel mix for the dugouts, like we did at the high school this past summer, so it won't be mud, dirt, and all that, so it'll be good for the kids. We'll be installing benches, maybe not this type, maybe we'll decide... This is a picture of the backstop, type backstop we're going to put in. This is at Polo Field. The same contractor put this one in, will be doing the same work for us. So it will all be fenced in both sides, so just showing the fencing, so there will be no balls, you know, going to either side, first and third. We'll also do a gravel mix for the dugouts, like we did at the high school this past summer, so it won't be mud, dirt, and all that, so it'll be good for the kids. We'll be installing benches, maybe not this type, maybe we'll decide what benches we will put in, but they probably will be aluminum, we won't go with wood because that'll just be maintenance later. Shot of the pitcher's mound will be, have to build a pitcher's mound out with clay bricks to make it official. That's just another overview, showing the layout, how everything's going to line up when we do the, when we do the field. And then estimated cost. It's going to be done in-house, except for the backstop. My maintenance crew and grounds crew will be cutting the field out, building the mounds, laying the bases, so the only cost will be coming will be the new backstop putting in, we'll have a contractor come in and put that in. And why it did that, I don't know. So, any questions? I think it'll be a nice addition to our sports teams, to have another place to play, and then when Linwood's done, then we'll decide what we will do there.
Is the field at Linwood where seventh, eighth used to play baseball, is that totally like out of use with construction?
Yeah, right now, it's totally gone.
Okay.
Yeah, it's out of use.
Okay.
So, once the building's done, then we want to sit down with Ken and we'll put the township, because that's township property on that side, and then we'll decide what we're going to do.
So basically, we need somewhere for them to play.
Right now, we need somewhere to play our spring season. So if we get started on it in the next week or two, we can have it in and ready to have them play by, you know, springtime.
At the overhead shot, you showed where the new baseball field would be, it looked like there were maybe two other baseball fields on the property, could you describe?
Yeah, that's, I'm trying to get back there. That is township property. I will show you, right about, I don't know, right, you see where the field is up on the top left? Our property line goes right through that baseball field there. So half of that field is ours, the other half is the township's. That's where our line is, our property line. So that is township, that bottom field there, that's what we use, and it's township property. But we do use it.
So there'd be three baseball fields?
Now, actually, that's a softball field at the bottom.
Okay.
Baseball field we're putting in, softball field, top corner.
Okay, and I recall from having kids in elementary school that, that space where the new ball field was used for, I think, the school field hockey games?
We're just going to shift the field out to the outfield when we line it up.
Does it enough room there to have playing fields for other sports, too?
There's enough room, yes. And just recently, it's, that whole pathway is getting done right now by the township. They just repaved that pathway all the way up into, to our playground, even though it's our property. The township had a grant for paving, and they just completed, it looks great, and they actually tied it all into our playground and everywhere. Looks nice.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, JR.
Next item on our agenda is a presentation on K-8 guidance resources. Ms. Saxa, Mr. Huran, and guidance staff.
Good evening, thank you. Mr. Feinberg, members of the board, administration, members of the public, all my new teacher friends, we're very happy to have a presentation for you this evening regarding our guidance program at the elementary level and our school counseling services available at the middle level. With me here this evening, we have Ms. Katherine Malam, who is our new co-department chair for the school counseling department, as well as Colleen Melzinski, who's over there, who is also a co-chair for our school counseling department. They have both been working very hard, not only this year, to sort of keep all of our counselors informed and learning and doing all of those great things, but also in previous years, as they've been here and serving our students for long periods of time. So Katherine's going to share with us our guidance program at the elementary level, with a particular eye toward how our students learn about diversity at those young ages. And then our middle school folks will be here to talk to us about how they access programming as students in the middle school.
I just touched the mouse.
I know, oh, did I touch it? Now you have to talk about construction. No, let's see.
Yeah, you used to click.
I can just click this.
Looks like you can just click that, okay. And as you can see here...
That's right.
The field will appear, let's see, there we go. Okay, there we go.
All right. All right, good evening, thank you very much for having me here tonight. A little over 30 years ago, the school board of Haverford Township and the superintendent made a very bold decision, which was to begin an elementary counseling program. And they hired three counselors for the five elementary schools, which right now sounds a little daunting. At that time, this was one of the only elementary counseling programs in the entire area. And I'll talk to you a little bit about how they went another step further to really make it an extraordinary and unique program. Rather than focusing just on intervention, this program focuses on preventative measures and strategies to help our students to be successful. So what do elementary school counselors do? Many of us grew up with high school counselors, that may be our only image of what counselors are. This is kind of a, not by any means an exhaustive list, but in Haverford, these are some of the roles and functions of our elementary school counselors. Things to keep in mind, school counselors are not only educators, we are mental health professionals, and we are resources for teachers and for parents and for students about mental health. We don't provide therapy, that's much more intensive, it's going to require more collaboration with parents on an ongoing basis, certainly it's going to be more long-term, but we do provide school counseling short-term for both, for students, both for individual and group counseling needs. Also, we do have a developmental program, which I'm going to talk to you a little bit about in a few minutes, which is a social-emotional learning program. We collaborate, of course, with our families, with outside agencies, with our other fellow educators, and we provide crisis intervention, not only at the very individual level for a student who may have had a loss in their family, but also at a school level and sometimes, sadly, at a community level as well. Much of our work happens within various school teams as we advocate for children across our teams. And in the school district of Haverford Township, the elementary and middle school and high school counselors are all case managers for our five-four accommodation plans as well. We also provide referrals for long-term support for those kids who might need some support beyond school counseling. Now here's what's really extraordinary about our program. Unlike most of the school districts with whom we like to compare ourselves, the elementary counselors are in the students' classrooms once every other week for 30 minutes for a social-emotional learning curriculum. Long before social-emotional learning was a buzzword in education, for 30 years, Haverford has had a social-emotional learning program in our elementary schools. These programs, this program allows us to be in students' classrooms, from the time they're in kindergarten all through fifth grade. They know us and we know them. We can speak with knowledge, with a personal connection in our teams, to our families, to our teachers about these kids. We can say, well, this is what happened to this child back in first grade, or this is something that this child has struggled with last year. We've also helped to reduce the stigma around mental health, because school counselors are a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly part of our kids' lives. Our program is developmental, meaning it really matches the needs of our kids. We obviously are not teaching at a kindergarten level, what we're going to be then, four years later, teaching in an upper grade. Our program has evolved, it certainly aligns with the social-emotional learning core competencies and our PA standards, but we have been able to design a program over time that changes with the world that our kids live in. So for example, bullying and bullying programs really were not very, very much in existence, really, I would say, 30 years ago. And we have brought those lessons, those units, those preventative measures and those interventions into our schools throughout our guidance program. We did not teach about cyber citizenship or cyber safety, because there was no internet when our school district started this program. So it's really amazing to see how our program has evolved, really to meet the needs of the kids and the world that they live in. What do we teach? So again, this is not an exhaustive list, but it gives you a little bit of a sense. Our objectives spiral, as many of our curricula do. We lay the foundation and then we build upon it. We come back to that particular skill, but at a different developmental level. So in first grade, we may be learning about positive self-talk or a growth mindset, but in fifth grade, we have an in-depth unit about optimism. We help kids to understand what optimism is. We understand that optimism is very closely related to students' mental health, it has a direct relationship to depression, and we really delve into that at the upper grades. In first grade, we're talking about what bullying, teasing are, and how it's different, how they're different behaviors. In fourth grade, we're teaching about the types of bullying, we're talking about relational aggression, we're talking about gossip, we're talking about rumors, we're talking about cyberbullying. So this, again, will give you a sense that we're not just doing intervention, we're prevent, we've got a very preventative model. Because of our district's initiative on belongingness, I do want to highlight some of what we do to teach kids about diversity. A big part of what we do is talking about acceptance of differences, appreciating differences in others, and developing empathy. So in our primary grades, we're really asking these questions, in our lessons, in our stories, in all the resources that we use. What makes me unique? How am I a special individual? How are we different from others? How are we the same? We talk a lot about differences. We also talk about we're all human, we have a human heart, we have a human need for friendship and belongingness and connectedness. How do we, as a community, make sure that each person feels accepted and included and valued in what we do? And these are some of the things that we're really talking about with our young children. These are some of the resources, and again, I could spend hours talking about this program, but I will not. Here are some of the resources that we use, kind of at the kindergarten and first grade level. Clearly, we're talking about racial differences right from the very start. I know that question has come up in this room, when do we start talking about race? We start talking about race when kids are young, we start talking about those differences, we talk about inclusion, we talk about acceptance. We talk about our likes and dislikes. Carla's sandwich, for example, is a lovely little story about a girl who brings, quote, "weird sandwiches" to school, and how her students initially respond. We talk about being an individual, we talk about being yourself, having the courage to be yourself, and also having the courage to let others be themselves. Introducing Teddy, as we work with the district's policy on gender expansive and transgender students, really starts talking about gender, what is gender, what are our ideas about gender? And who's in a family makes us remember that every family is different, unique, and special. Every constellation of a family is different, unique, and special. Moving on to our grades two and three, there's kind of some examples where we continue to spiral up and carry those themes forward, about individuality, having the courage to be yourself with a bad case of stripes. Invisible Boy, which really talks about belongingness, taking a look at each single person, seeing how we can reach out and be compassionate and empathetic. Jacob's New Dress, again, continuing as we break down some of those stereotypes about what it means to be a boy or a girl, and opening children's minds. This takes us to early adolescence. Neuroscience will tell us that adolescence is actually ages 10 to 25, so we often don't think that we have young adolescents in elementary school, but in fact, we do. And young adolescents are amazingly ready and interested in talking about injustice. So when we're talking about stereotypes and prejudice and discrimination, these are some of the most extraordinary conversations I've ever had with children. We do talk about race, building on some of our earlier lessons, and ethnicity, gender, breaking down those stereotypes. If you want to get 10-year-olds talking about anything, talk to them about gender stereotypes. They are fascinating to listen to. And also talking about disabilities. So in our upper grades, here are some of the resources that we're using. Fourth grade, we have an amazing video by Human Relations Media about differences in race, ethnicity, disabilities, appearance. We break down examples of students who have not been accepted because of some differences, we look at that, we look at the empathy piece of that, and then we talk about being allies or upstanders. We talk about how we can support kids when we see someone being mistreated, when we see injustice, when we see someone who's not included, who doesn't have a sense of belonging. And this leads to our lessons not only about empathy, but about turning empathy into action, because empathy without action is not helpful to another real, to another human being. In fifth grade, this year, we're adding the book Red, which if you're familiar with, looks like, and it is going to be used in kindergarten as well, because it can be done in a very concrete way, about a crayon that everyone thinks is red, but really is blue, and color's blue, and it's an amazing allegory about how people may feel different on the inside than they appear on the outside, and really helping our kids to open their minds to all kinds of differences. And we continue to find resources. Thankfully, there are incredible resources developing or coming out all the time. Molly's Pilgrim is an older resource, however, it deals with, it has, it's a beautiful story about a girl and how she is treated because of her ethnic and racial and religious differences. And so breaking that down, having kids identify examples of stereotypes and prejudice and discrimination that they see in that movie. So this quote is, says the highest result of education is tolerance, but I also want to tell you that one of the most amazing things I've ever had a student say as a result of one of our lessons in fifth grade, is the eyes don't see everything. That's one of the things that she took away from our lesson. So this kind of presents an overview of what we do, again, not exhaustive, but I think you have a sense of the role and functions of our elementary counselors and what we're doing in our program. I just want to tell the board that you can look around in all of the districts around us, and there is not a single one that by the time kids leave fifth grade, they've had 100 social-emotional learning lessons. So I want to thank you for continuing to expand our program, for your support of the program, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you so much for the information, the overview. I think this is information that is obviously helpful to our children. In what ways is, are these same lessons able to go home, to be reinforced in the homes and in the community in general? Sure, it's a great question, thank you. So our, all of our objectives are on the district website, so parents have access to that. But most of our lessons are accompanied by the things that the kids do in the lesson, whether it's a handout, a packet, a worksheet, and so on. So we do have that kind of ongoing flow home, and I think that kids will talk about guidance, especially if there's been an interesting conversation or a story that they've heard, community kind of programs that we do. Yeah, I remember when my kids were in elementary school, Mudmind came home. Oh, yes. That's great, yeah. Mudmind and Clearmind is how we introduce the concepts of negative self-talk and positive self-talk in a way that's accessible to young kids. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I would just like to comment that, first of all, Katherine Malam is a fixture and a guidance counselor to be admired and respected.
Thank you very much, Susan.
I congratulate you on your wonderful career. I'm just sorry your daughter's not here. Now she's got to pick you up, I guess, this way. Sorry, Katherine. I just really want everyone to know, as a former elementary principal, that when Katherine says, "The elementary guidance counselors know every single child," and they can tell you about every single child, and that is, as you've said, unheard of in most elementary worlds.
It is.
As a principal, for me to be able to walk into the guidance room and say, "Tell me about so-and-so," and boom, there we have it, and we can work from there. So I just am very, very proud of this program. It's one of the things that I think we do so very well in Haverford, and I congratulate Katherine as always on a job.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, thank you.
I'd like to add one thing. Beside our fantastic academic emphasis, keep in mind that the original purpose of public education was to educate people who run a democracy.
Yes.
And so we're ahead of everybody.
We are indeed. Thank you.
We have one national school of character at Chestnut Wald, what's stopping the other four from following those footsteps?
Absolutely.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Great. Okay, great.
Nothing, the sky's the limit.
Let's go.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Catherine. And a note, Lynwood was also recognized as a school with promising practices for Character.org and is looking into the application process for the Character Award that Chestnut Wald received as well this year. So thank you to Catherine, to all of the elementary counselors for what they put into that program, to keeping it alive, keeping it working with students, and adapting it to what we, as a community, decide is important. We do appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Haran and the counseling team at the middle school for being here. Tonight with us, we have, so far, who I've seen, anyway, is Colleen Melzinski, Ricky White, and Jaclyn Galtieri. Anybody else in house? Okay, great. Great. And so they're going to talk to us.
Students with them.
Oh, and students, of course. Right, students. The counseling team, there's students, and Mr. Haran, thank you for being here this evening.
I hope everybody files in. A little team with us tonight. So thank you for allowing the middle school to present to you this evening. We have a part of our counseling team here with us tonight, and some of our students. And the students that are here tonight are also school board representatives, so if you haven't seen them already, you'll see them in the future. We're going to share with you the wonderful supports and services that the middle school provides to our school community. We did share with you a quick slide of our entire counseling team, so it's quite extensive, a variety of people and certificates, and they provide a real wide range of services for our kids and our families and our community. So we're going to actually have our guidance counselors come up and present with some of our students. The guidance counselors that are here with us tonight are Ricky White, she's one of our new teachers that you saw a moment ago, Jackie Galtieri, she's one of our counselors as well, and Colleen Melzinski, who's another one of our guidance counselors. So they'll present to you this evening with some of our students, and we'll, you know, gladly answer any questions when we're done.
Well, hello. Thank you guys so much for letting us come speak with you today, and thank you, Mr. Haran, and the board for inviting us. My name is Ricky White. I'm the new sixth-grade counselor at Haverford Middle School, and I'm really excited to share with you guys some of the things that we're having at the middle school this year, and we're planning, and things were already started. So just an overview of what our role is, and I think Ms. Malum really went through some great bullet points. But just as school counselors, we follow the ASCA national model, and that's the American School Counseling Association. And what that does is provide a framework through which we provide the best supports for our students. So it breaks it down in a way where we can collaborate with our students, our staff, meaning our teachers, and our support staff on campus, and the administration, and different families in the community, to best serve our students. And we do that by getting input, talking to students regularly. We communicate with parents more than any district that I've ever been a part of, which has been really exciting. We constantly communicate with admin. We're always talking with each other. And the community has been really supportive, so it makes our job much easier as school counselors to provide and support for our students every day. So it's just an honor to be a part of a team like this. So I'm passing off to Ms. Melzinski.
I am here with Karis, and we are going to touch on some of the things that we do curriculum-related. So in various ways, we have helped with the health and developmental guidance classes. We assist the nurse with social-emotional needs that sometimes show up as physical needs. And we meet with individual students either individually or in groups, which we will touch upon a little later. And the biggest thing, I think, that we do every year is plan and support wellness days. And Karis is going to talk about that a little bit.
So on wellness days, the school goes over worldwide problems. So just last week, the school went over school safety and mental health and physical health.
And we'll have others throughout the year. We do them on our ACT 80 days, so there'll be three more of those. And we touch on, as Karis said, safe schools, school safety, as well as digital safety was our first one. And then we're touching on some mental health issues as well as we go through the year. And now Ms. Galtieri is going to talk.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ms. Galtieri. I'm filling in in the seventh-grade counseling department this year at Haverford Middle School, and I'm really honored to be a part of this district. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our crisis response. So in regards to crisis, we respond to students' crises, family crises that happen at home, and as well as the community. In our district, we receive reports through our Safe to Say app, where students can anonymously report something about themselves or a friend that they're worried about, and then the report is given to the local police and then, as well as our administrators. And then our administrators work closely with the counselors, who then speak with students to address concerns that were brought up in the Safe to Say report. And our middle school also is able to, as a part of Haverford Township, provide support to other schools and communities that are around us. And we're able to provide community support to families if they're in need. So I have Sarah here, and she's going to talk a little bit about our Safe Schools Week. So in regards to crisis response, our approach is to be proactive. So two weeks ago, we celebrated National Safe Schools Week, and we wanted to get our kids thinking about their role in keeping the school safe, because it's important that not only do our staff work diligently to keep schools safe, but we want kids to understand their role and how important their job is, as well as keeping schools safe. So last week, or two weeks ago, we had a Safe Schools event. Share what we did down in the lunchroom.
Yeah. So last week, the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade counselors came down to lunch, and they gave the students, like, paper slips to write about how we could make the school safer. And then afterwards, the students hung the slips on the corridor walls, or windows, as you can see.
So this was a way to get our kids involved, thinking about their individual roles in keeping our kids safe. So kids learn the expectations for how they can keep schools safe through our wellness days. And our counselors went into homerooms the week of to talk about school safety. So a lot of our feedback from students was understanding that they're not supposed to open an outside door for people, even if it is their friends. We got a lot of responses about that. We also got responses about coming to school and making sure you're entering through the proper door. If you're coming in late, we got responses about not keeping the classroom door shut at all times. So these are, this is feedback that we received from our students, and it was great to see that they are aware of how important their role is in supporting Safe Schools Week. So here's a few pictures of the counselors down in the cafeteria. So we went down and all three lunches and had a table set up where kids could come up if they wished to and fill out a slip. And then we hung them up for kids, and they're still hanging in our middle school because we want to still continue to promote school safety. And then we're going to talk about groups. So every year, we do student groups, and each year, you know, it's based on kind of the needs of the students that we see. This year, we are running a diversity belonging group, an empowerment group, and a stress and mindfulness group. We polled students this year through a Google form. We put a little PowerPoint together that ran through homerooms, and then they had the opportunity to sign up for groups through Google form. And Reese, do you want to talk a little bit about how those groups run and anything else you have to add?
So for the three groups, there's diversity and belonging, empowerment, and stress and mindfulness. The groups meet from four to six times throughout the year during lunch with a group of students that are also, like, going through the same situation. Or, like, and it's just like an open discussion so that you can kind of, like, have yourself heard and find out solutions to problems that you might have and relate to other classmates.
So I have our good friend Anaya, who's an awesome eighth grader, and she's going to help me talk about our new social media page that we're really excited about. So, good? All right. So we already know that Mr. Haran runs our awesome and hilarious Twitter page for the middle school. But we, as school counselors, thought that it'd be a great idea to start an Instagram page called, oh, it's @GuidingForward, so if you have Instagram, please follow us. We thought that it would be a good opportunity to connect with our students at the level they're used to. So we know that our kids are always using their phones. They're always on TikTok or Snapchat or things like that. And we thought that if they are already on these devices all the time, why not give them an opportunity or a space to see something productive and a place where they can access resources and tips for managing middle school, positive messages. We're going to share other, you know, awesome pages, like the Trevor Project and things like that, updates on different events we're having at school through the guidance department, and different groups and club promotions that we are going to offer. And Anaya is going to share why she also thinks this is a really great idea.
For me, I think because a lot of people that I know have Instagram, and a lot of the kids and students in our grade, in eighth grade, seventh grade, or sixth grade, and it could benefit us because it gets the communication around faster. And it could, if people don't want to come in and talk about stuff, and they want to get their problems done on their own, they can go onto the website and look up, and you could comment and ask the teacher or email a teacher if you need help.
Great. Thank you.
So next, I'm going to be talking about a resource wall that we put up a couple of weeks ago in our middle school. There was a big, empty space that wasn't being used in the seventh-grade hallway, and I wanted to get some proactive information up there for my students. So the resource wall was created. There are pockets of folders that have different flyers. And some of the flyers talk about coping strategies, tips for studying, how to solve a problem. And the main focus of the wall is to be proactive. So sometimes students don't always feel comfortable coming down to talk to the guidance counselor, or they don't find time in their schedule to get down, since they're going to classes throughout the entire day. So this wall is in a location where a lot of students see it. It is in the direct route of going to the cafeteria, so along their way, they can look up there, and the flyers interchange every month and a half, and there's new information that's put up there. So students can see if there's anything that's up there that's applicable to them, and feel free to take a flyer with them. And I have Hannah here, and she's going to talk about what else is on the wall and the benefit of having something right there for students to use.
So one thing that's on the resource wall is tips for signing up for Google Calendar. And a new thing this year is, we haven't had any planners, so Google Calendar is a new thing. So if students don't know how to sign up, or they're having trouble with it, they can grab a form from the resource wall to show them how to use it and how to see what assignments they, that are coming up and stuff like that. And there's also, like, Safe to Say stuff on there and, like, forms you can grab that you can fill out anonymously and hand into a teacher. So if students are, like, afraid to talk about something, or they don't, like, want it to be known, they could, like, grab a form and fill it out and hand it in to a teacher.
So again, the resource wall is meant to be a proactive information center for kids. In the middle school, we have over 1,500 students. There's about 525 kids in each grade. And as counselors, we work diligently to see all of them, but we know that sometimes kids don't like to come down and ask a question. So we want to have this as a place where they can reach out and get support in a more anonymous way. And we're going to end here talking about what we have next happening at HMS.
So for looking forward, in the near future, there will be many school-wide events at the middle school. And among them are the Food Gift Drive, the World Kindness Day, and Secret Buddy. And lastly, there's Mix It Up Day, where HMS students are encouraged to get out of their comfort zones. And this is accomplished by assigning various activities designed to get students to identify, question, and cross social boundaries. So meet new people and work with different groups of people.
Very excited about what HMS still has to come. Thank you all for your time. If you have any questions, we're welcome to answer them.
I just have one question. I'd love to hear a little bit more about Mix It Up Day, because I, when my kids went, it was like a lunch thing, but it sounds like it's a lot more now. Can you talk a little bit about it?
So Mix It Up Day is part of our initiative to be a No Place for Hate school, and it's one of the requirements that the Anti-Defamation League kind of pushes a little bit for us to do. And we started out, you're right, that it was a lunch kind of activity, and it just didn't seem like enough. They, by the time they went through the line and got food, and then they sat down and had to figure out where they were sitting for the day, it just didn't seem like it was doing its service that it was supposed to be intended to do. And so as we kept kind of revamping and trying to figure out how to make it work a little bit better, this year, we're giving some more time to it and allowing for those barriers and comfort zones to be, you know, broken down a little bit longer, as opposed to just, you know, 15, 20 minutes that they would be sitting in a lunchroom.
I have a question. I don't know who this is a question. I think it's probably for Mr. Haran. We have great success in the elementary with Responsive Classroom. Every school, every homeroom has a meeting in the morning, 10 minutes. And for me, it's one of the best parts of inclusion in our school district. And I often wonder why we don't at least bring that into sixth grade. The kids are already trained. They're trained in the language. They know how to meet. And I'm asking you what your opinion is of bringing it up to sixth grade.
So we've already started working with the DCU.
Microphone, dear. Thank you, Ms. Haran.
You're welcome. We're actually currently working with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Dr. Mundee, and we're focusing, we have a focus team, a core team, for this year to begin a restorative, to become a restorative practices school. So that's kind of like aligned with Responsive Classroom. And so we're going to have our core team together this year, and a planning team. And next year, we'll be school-wide, a restorative practices school. So it's along the same lines. It's just not the exact same program.
Restorative practice is for, is for people to make amends. That's the way I remembered it a million years ago. I guess I'm wrong. It's...
That's a component of it?
Decated.
Yeah, that's a component of it. Like, so morning meeting is a component of Responsive Classroom.
Right.
So the restorative practice that you're speaking of, where you have maybe two people that have an issue, that's one component of this restorative practice model.
Okay. Is there anything that can be brought into a sixth-grade homeroom? I just feel like these kids come in and they don't know anyone. I mean, you know, the big message in September is, "What team, what team, what team?" And I just always thought it would be a wonderful opportunity, maybe for a month. They know how to do it, just to have meetings so they could all feel more comfortable in their homeroom in middle school. And I get that I'm saying, "Let's add something else," and I get that completely. So I'm asking for your opinion. That's all.
So there's a couple of things interweave with that. So if, and I will share with you, maybe I'll come back and talk a little bit more extensively about the restorative practice model, because those things are included. We already do a lot of things in the middle school to, like, facilitate socialization and people to get to know each other. And one real good example, I think, showing that we do a good job with that is at the end of the year, sixth graders help us orient our fifth graders, and we always have about 10 or 12 students from each elementary school present to the current elementary school. And the kids talk about, it's totally unscripted, they talk about their sixth-grade experience. And I know that we do a good job with, like, helping people meet new friends and talking, because the kids that are always up there, the one thing that they always talk about is that the people that they're friends with are not the kids that they were friends with in elementary school exclusively. They create and build all these new friendships. So, I mean, we're definitely, you know, creating an opportunity and doing something right, if that's something that comes up year after year, which is surprising to me when I hear them say that.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I just want to take a minute to say thank you for empowering our young people. I mean, clearly, by bringing our students here tonight, and thank you for coming. I know it's a little later probably for you, but thank you for coming. It seems like a lot of the things that you're doing is coming from within, and that these students are bringing things to their colleagues, which is really great, including technology, which I think is amazing. And I just, it always amazes me that when we have presentations, that there's that authentic sense of learning that our students have. So thank you for always trying to build that up from within, and thank you to our students for taking... for taking that on and inspiring your friends to do the same. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. It sounds like there's great things happening every day, and we're going to head into our business meeting, so if any middle school students or new teachers have a burning desire to stay for our business meeting, you're welcome to. But if you'd prefer to sneak out, we'll give you an opportunity. Moving right along. Next item is budget transfers. I'll accept a motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $18,567.80.
Moved in second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? This one's a roll call for.
Dr. Allen Stuck?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yep.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Sinto?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes, eight voting yes. Thank you. Next item, I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements from the general fund totaling
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Is this the bill list?
Yes, it is.
Oh, there's a Dr. Ira LeBeau on there, just under $26,000 on November 8th. That's a different doctor than the one we recently approved to serve the district. What does Dr. LeBeau do?
We can check that and get back to you.
Okay. I think the last one I heard about was Capista, so I'm guessing LeBeau does something different. Or they're in the same.
Doctor doesn't necessarily just mean he's a medical doctor.
That could be, yes. We'll get that information.
No, he's a pediatrician. I looked him up. I'm just wondering what he does. All of a sudden, you're alive.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, change order. I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the new Linwood Elementary School project architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'll accept a motion to adopt the amendment to the parameters bond resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series A and B of 2019, the 2019 bonds adopted on October 24th, 2019.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Could we just get a brief update on what this is?
Bob?
A brief update?
Brief?
Brief, okay. We approved the parameters resolution last time for the series of 2019 A and B, and we got a call back that they wanted to change the call date. It was originally when we were doing it, up to six years before we were able to call the bonds. In other words, take the bonds back and pay them off like with a refinancing. But he said it would be more strategic for us to extend that to 10 years, so the call date goes up to 10 years, and it's, has something to do with the fact that they're non-bank qualified, about $40 million in bonds we're selling.
So basically, it's provided more flexibility for them in making the decision when to pull the trigger. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is this you?
We were going to have you do it, but you're. I can go through.
Was that roll call?
In the, no, you, are you finished with that one?
Yeah, we voted.
It's done.
We voted, yeah. Yeah.
I ask that you accept the following retirements and resignations as they're listed.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm with the program now.
You got it. There you go.
I'll accept the motion to accept the following appointments as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following leave requests subject to receipt of required documentation.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the placement of special ed student number 10-52423 for the 2019-2020 school year, including 2020 ESY, in an amount not to exceed $40,815.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placements for the 2019-2020 school year as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board reports? Am I missing anything?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Sinto?
Just quickly, I know that there's been some press about two bills in the PA House and Senate, 751 and 1607, about teacher evaluations, and I know it's got some coverage, you know, leaving out opinions about what is good and bad and whatnot. I think it's good that there's a conversation happening about that, and just as a personal commentary, I hope that there is continued effort to get our professional teachers in the state of Pennsylvania some voice in that as they look towards how to evaluate, you know, very dedicated and professional people in our state.
I think those, my understanding is that the proposed legislation would make a larger percentage of the evaluation be based on observation as opposed to.
Yes.
Just test scores. I'm all for that. Anything else? Bridget?
Just wanted to report out that Mr. Feinberg, Dr. Roushi, and I went to the high school PTO meeting last night, the first one for the year. Our plan is to get to all of the schools' PTO meetings and be able to give an update on some of the things that the board is working on, some initiatives within the district, and also to be available to answer questions. So next week, we're going to Manoa. We've got two other schools scheduled before the winter break, and look forward to getting to the remainder of our schools in the spring.
Thank you. Now, you folks down at the other end of the table, the clock is ticking, so you're going to have to give your own board reports at home in a few more weeks, so take advantage.
Well, two things. I was sitting in Kaufmeyer's minding my diet the other day, and enrolled about 20 highly intelligent-looking young people bouncing off the walls and so forth. It turned out to be the robotics team. They had spent two days up at Wissahican High School battling 30 other teams and came out as champions. So our robotics team, I'm not quite sure what the level they were doing. This probably sets up for the big one that they have at Westfield Friends, but every day, but this is a big time. Second thing probably more serious, and I'm going to get political. So one day is Veterans Day, and just to point out, this is not as common as it used to be. I am the ninth cousin, third, and last brother to be wearing a uniform, and I am so glad that that's not so common anymore. However, we do not want to forget a couple of things. First of all, my father-in-law is in hospice now. He was in U.S. Marines in Okinawa at the end of World War II. The greatest generation is disappearing, and us baby boomers are getting fat, with three exceptions. I want you to remember these names: Mueller, Taylor, and Vindman. U.S. military who kept serving their nation. Turn on MSNBC and see it. That's the political part. I'm proud to have worn the uniform that two of those guys wore.
Thanks, Tim.
Tough to follow. Just congratulations, everyone, on the election, and best wishes to everyone new joining the board and to all the people who are staying on the board.
Thanks.
I'll just share that I went before tonight's meeting. I went to the Haverford Golf Banquet. My son participated in golf all four years, and it's a great program, and anyone who's thinking about checking out golf, I encourage you to play. They played some great courses. Couple administrators played them last week. I don't know how it went. Mr. Donaghy, did you go?
We won.
You won? Okay. There's something disagreeing behind you. But no, it's a great program, and we're lucky to have it in the district, and Mr. Oxman and his dad helps out. It's a great program.
No report.
I was going to talk about the robotics as well. That was a tournament, it's kind of what they call an off-tournament. It's something where they just have all the local kids get ready for the big stuff after the holiday, so I congratulate them. It was really, I actually had a friend send me the, they were doing it right on my screen. What's that called?
Live stream.
Streaming, thank you.
Doing it right on my screen.
You know, it's right there.
You are so Texas.
I could touch it. So it was very cool, and the kids were just beside themselves, so I congratulate them. I went to the football game, unbelievable. If anybody can get out there next Saturday, it would be more fun than you can have. It's far, it's in Downingtown West, right? But, you know, they won, I think it's such a big deal that they won their first states. Yeah, it's just such a big deal, and it was so exciting to watch those kids, and all the kids, the band, the cheerleaders, everybody was out there to support. It was great. I am very sorry that I can't come tomorrow. I have always been, from the beginning of my career, a best buddies supporter. We had best buddies when we were at Cooper Town, when I was at Cooper Town, and I followed them. Peggy D., who was at the high school for so many years, who started it, I think started it everywhere, did such a great job. And I congratulate Joanne Patterson, who has worked hard with Bachi and anything else that Peggy or the new teachers could dream up for her. And we are now being awarded nationally for this wonderful program. So once again, another thing for all of us in Haverford to be so proud of. You're shaping your head, but it's true, right? This is something that's really fabulous, so I congratulate us. And Saturday, the science was more fun than you could have, and I hope everybody got their little guys out there and their elementary students because it's the excitement, the enthusiasm, the teachers, I'm talking about the teachers, with the excitement and the enthusiasm. It was just awesome. So thank you. It was a pleasure to be at Haverford Ford this week, as it is every week.
Thanks, Susan. On the legislative side, I'd just like to sort of give a heads up that it's probably been eight or 10 years since the Pennsylvania Legislature tried to run a voucher bill, and it's my understanding that we're going to see one very shortly. I believe that it's Speaker Terzis' bill. It's going to be on the agenda for the House Education Committee within the next week or so, and we're hearing that it's going to be fast-tracked for a vote in the full house in short order. So there'll be some legislative alerts coming out from all education stakeholders in the not-too-distant future, and I would urge you to follow up on those alerts once you get them and reach out to your legislators and perhaps the legislative leadership. More to come on that. The board met in executive session to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, resignations, and leaves of absence. And with that, I would gladly accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, next meeting, that's right. I'm derelict in my duties. Next meeting is scheduled to be held November 21st, 2019, right here in the board conference room, Oakmont Building. Thank you.[1767.57]